Good evening. Welcome to the April 11th Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also join us for a moment of silence before we move on with our agenda. Thank you. Welcome this evening. This is the night that we also have scheduled our public forum, which will start as soon as we conclude some of the business that's on our agenda. So the public forum is slated for just a little bit later on. With that, we decided instead of having public comment time, that we would include all of that comment during the public forum. So we'll try to move through these items, give them certainly the attention they are due, but move through quickly so we can open up the public forum and hear any comments on any topic that you all may wish to address the board. So with that, we have one public hearing scheduled this evening. And I will turn it over to our attorney. Attorney Phil in this evening, welcome.
All right, there will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. Following rules and procedure will apply to the hearing. A public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper, posted on the town bulletin boards, and according to statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted and pulled to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement will be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself clearly when you come forward. The public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider a proposed amendment to Chapter 153 of zoning, Chapter 153.356, dimensional requirements and development standards to require a combination of lots for single developments for new construction and substantial damage and improvement. All right. It doesn't appear that any individual that signed up will speak. Right here.
Okay. So do we have any questions? Discussions for Greg? Well, if no questions or comments, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approve the following amendment. Chapter 153 zoning, 153.356, dimensional requirements and development standards to require a combination of lots for single developments for new construction and substantial damage or improvement. The Board of Commissioners finds that this proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.356, dimensional requirements and development standards to require a combination of lots for single developments for new construction and substantial damage is consistent with all comprehensive plans, already officially adopted plans of the town of Killable Hills that are applicable and that the amendment is reasonable and in a public interest.
Is there a... Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll move on to the first item under new business is a site plan review for Captain George's restaurant at 705 South Croatan Highway. This is for building addition and parking area addition on adjacent property with associated site modifications. Greg, would you like to kick us off on this one, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
What we have tonight is a site plan and you'll find in one of your packages, you'll see there's a landscape plan, a lighting plan, and some specific plans that show adding parking spaces and also adding a new walk-in and relocating another walk-in, expanding the kitchen, and some associated site improvements. And the planning board reviewed this March 16th at their meeting, and they recommend conditional approval. And since that time, all the conditions have been addressed on the site plan in this annual package, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for Greg? Or Mr. Tor is John. Welcome. How are you?
How are y'all? Happy spring.
So do we have any questions then for John, the engineer on the project? If no questions, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for Captain George's building addition and the parking area associated with the remodel.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all very much for this start immediately.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, John.
The next item under new business is the water system master plan capital improvements update, and specifically an update on water meter replacements. Debbie's gonna...
Actually, I'm gonna ask...
Or Steve?
Steve.
Okay, welcome, Steve.
Welcome, good evening. It's capital improvements, and I'd like to actually start and give you a little update. Today was busy. They poured the first two northern blocks of the sidewalk today. So you're seeing a lot of orange vests out along the road. And RPC completed the paving, or are completing, East 8th Street, West 8th Street was done about lunchtime. So they had hoped to get that by Easter, the weather didn't cooperate. And the two water main projects are just about finished up. So getting everything buttoned up and ready for the season.
Great. Very busy, but lots of great, great capital improvements.
Nice to see the sidewalks and 8th Street too, for sure.
Yeah, 8th Street was there when Nag said, and everybody's pretty...
That went well, did that cooperation?
But water meter replacements, we're on year three of our aging meter replacements. That was something that was identified in the water system master plan. And with this replacement, we do have radio read technology that is able to do some leak detection. So it was discussed with the monthly billing from quarterly billing and what those benefits were. And when we got looking at it, there's actually going to be some substantial cost increases for us to go to the monthly billing. Vendors alone is like a $26,000 increase for postage and just the printing of the bills. Then you've got additional staff time on that to go. Right now, we annually do around 26,000 bills, and if you went to monthly, you'd increase that to 78,000 bills we'd be sending to the customers. So we started looking at doing meter reading for non-billing purposes strictly for leak detection. And we've started implementing that back in January. And with the meters that are capable of that, we're finding about 15 leaks a month. And of course, we're notifying those customers as soon as we find out. So they don't have a 90-day period with a quarterly billing that they could have a leak continue to accumulate. So I guess that's for your consideration, how much you want to pursue the monthly billing or this addresses. I think that was the main concern was that with a quarterly billing, we were getting some high leaks.
Right, and I don't know if you guys remember, but I mean, I've been approached by several citizens who were really, really frustrated because they didn't know they had a leak. They didn't know until their bill came, and it was, you know, crazy amount increase. And while the town works with them, you know, we have policy, we even expanded our policy about the repayment terms, but we still were charged for the water from Deer County. So we still were passing the at-cost, but no increase to that in these cases of a water leak. So we had inquired about what would the cost be for us to switch to go to monthly invoicing and meter reading because maybe that would be a way to catch these leaks quicker and blush you. But apparently, it is a significant cost to do that. But with the replacing the meters, that's what we've been doing, and now we're on the third year, if we have the capability to do, I guess it's just drive-by readings, and then they can quickly see, even though we're not gonna, we're still would keep invoicing every three months, they, the staff would notify anyone if they drive by and see that as an off-reading to what the historical trends would be then.
So hopefully, that $900 leak that was, was three months will now catch in 30 days, and it's a $300 leak. You know, you've eliminated much of the pain.
Yes.
That's fantastic, yeah.
What is the capacity when all of the meters are replaced according to our master water plan that we adopted? What is the capacity for staff to do that reading, though, every month? I mean, do we, will we have that capacity, or will we still need to budget at some point some increase to do that?
Yes, doing simply a leak alarm reading is fairly efficient, and you're just targeting those 15 or 20 alarms. Of course, you gotta go to each location and visually inspect the meter and confirm that it's an active leak. And then there's some follow-up office time to contact the customer. But that's much simpler than actually creating and running and generating the bills.
And explain, so, I may have just thought of me. So you don't actually have to drive by to read each metering? Is it computerized, and then you only have to go out if it's one of those that is signaling a leak?
No, there's a laptop that's in the service truck, the antenna on top, and you drive the streets, and it reads it with a radio. And then, but of course, when you get an alarm, you stop and, and like I say, visually check the meter to confirm that it's still an active leak.
What, how does it trigger an alarm? Is it just based on previous month's usage or...?
Continuous usage of 10 gallons an hour for a 24-hour period. And it actually has data logging, so we can, we can pull a report that says the leak started at 2:30 in the afternoon this day and went for 12 days or whatever.
The meter itself has the capability of storing that. I did not know that.
Well, I mean, I think that makes the most sense is to, you know, we've been, we've kind of budgeted the cost as part of our master water plan to replace all of these meters over time. And I think that makes the most sense, utilize the technology that we're investing in versus adding an additional expense. Because I don't know that people, the folks that I spoke with, they didn't really, they weren't, they weren't desiring to pay a bill each month. They don't mind paying the bill once a quarter. It was the fact of just trying to earlier notification if there's an issue, which this does that.
And we do offer some payment plans. I know for the Ocean Acres customers, particularly with the water and the sewer, those bills can, when you do a quarterly, can be a little bit larger. So there is some, some payment plans to help soften that shit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
You answered my question, and I, and again, I think that you're exactly right. That's, that's the concern.
Yeah, and the last point, working with Beverly, we've accelerated that, that final plan to try to get everybody on the same page. So the, the budget that'll be coming forward will include a fourth year, which, which takes care of the remaining residential meters.
So everything would be wrapped up by the end of the fourth year?
Yes.
Great, okay.
So hopefully, by next January, February, it's, it's fully installed.
And this is in house replacement?
Yes.
We're doing all the labor and installing the meters. Well, thank you and your team. That's great. Next to me, thank you. Thanks.
As I say, Marcia Scarborough's here, if you've got any more detailed ability questions. She's the excellent customer service face at Public Services.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay, we'll move on then to new business item number three, a request and amendment to the official traffic map, excuse me, traffic map. This request made by Jim Douglas to allow on-street parking on the south side of East Chawan Street from US 158 to Raymond Avenue. And Greg, did you wanna...
I'll be happy to do what I can. What you have is pretty much a request to do on the south side what is on the north side today. And the street improvement subcommittee reviewed the request and spent a lot of time going over the different options and kind of came to the realization is what, what they were asking for is a change in the sign and, you know, no parking to parking at certain times. And what they ended up with is we recommend that from midnight, 6:00 AM to midnight, April 1 through October 1, park. And I think this will help Mr. Douglas. I don't see him here tonight to give you his, his angle on it, but I don't think it's caused a big problem on the, on the north side of Chawan Street. And as this is recommended, I don't believe it'll cause a big problem on the south side. So with that, the, the street improvement and special project subcommittee and staff recommend approval of the request.
Questions? You serve on the, any?
We actually had a lengthy discussion on it because there was, I think mostly just making sure that the board understood what we were talking about. And there's a neighboring property owner himself, I forgot his name, anyway, he's fine with it. Jimbo Ward, that's right. Yeah, Jimbo Ward, yeah, he's fine with it. I did have a question. I guess we could just, if there's problems, we could just go back and take it back, right? Change it?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. I know, and we do other things, so it's a conditional use, but that wouldn't be a conditional use. It'd be something different. Yeah, but I think it's a good idea.
Does Jimbo Ward own from Croatan all the way back to Raymond?
No.
That whole section?
No, he does not.
Is that house on the corner? Are they, I'm assuming they've been contacted?
I'm not sure anybody's been contacted other than Mr. Ward, but the way, the way it functions, the practical part of parking from would be on that 100 block, and it would just be, maybe mostly right up against Mr. Ward's property. I don't, I don't see, you have a driveway and then another small section that there's like a little barrier fence there. So that's the practicals, probably be very close to the restaurant, right across the street.
And so in this case, we would be, is there currently a no parking sign there? Is that the one that's pictured? Okay, so we would be removing, just removing that sign or changing?
It would change to a sign that would say...
That has the specifications?
Parking only during the hours from 6:00 AM to midnight, April 1 through October 1.
Okay, that would be...
One sign, and that would go up.
On the sign, okay. Greg, I noticed in the packet, it references that if the board were to approve this request, the recommendation is to make it conditional on Mr. Douglas agreeing to complete improvements to repair damages to Chawan Street as determined by politics. Do you know, has that been part of the discussion with him? Is he aware that that potential, that potential condition would be assigned to this approval?
That's my understanding, yes.
He volunteered to notify the action, and it's, I guess the sentence that says, "I will be more than happy to fix the area."
So then he means that he's willing to fix it.
He's anticipating, there's a problem, he's...
He's gonna be responsible, great.
But would like for that to be in the motion.
Absolutely. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the official traffic map to allow on-street parking on the south side of East Chawan Street from US 158 to Raymond Avenue with the condition that improvements be paid for by Jim Douglas of Chili Peppers.
Actually, it would be, if you don't mind, it would be that he, Jim Douglas would agree to complete improvements to repair damages if they are identified by the Public Works Department and Town Engineer.
Yes, that.
And also, I want to, I want to make sure that it's clear, it's to allow parking on the south side, not east side.
6:00 AM and 9:00, April 1, October 1. Yeah, okay, okay.
We cobbled that together, didn't we?
We did. Everybody comfortable? Okay, so there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's Jim.
Great, thank you. Next, under new business, item number four is this golf project. Debbie, does any of you introduce this?
Yes, I'm sure if one recalls, back in November, the board approved an estimated budget for revenues and naming rights and so forth, and sponsorship agreements. And we wanted to come back and sort of give you an update and ask for a little bit of adjustments to some of the sponsorship amounts. The funds are coming in very well and certainly anticipate that the project will move along very, very timely. But what we're asking for this evening is the nine benches that were set at 2,000 each, would ask that that be changed to 19 benches at 500 each, and the two picnic tables as opposed to 2,000 each, 500, and then one bike rack at 500. The 2,000 items just are a little bit over what we're seeing people being willing to, to pay for. And then, excuse me, it was determined that it would actually be nicer to have benches at each of the, at each of the holes. So would like the board to consider making those changes. And with, with what we're seeing with some other items coming in where people are making cash contributions but not necessarily wanting to be sponsors, we don't foresee there being a problem with the reduced revenue that that would bring. In fact, we see that it will possibly speed up getting these sponsors. So if, if with a motion, the board would approve the new revenue schedule, I would appreciate that. If there's any questions?
Motion would be in order to approve the disc golf course adjusted revenue and amenities schedule.
I'll make a motion that we, we approve the disc golf course adjusted revenue and amenities schedule.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And if also, if you recall back in the November meeting, the board approved the sponsorship agreements and the, and the naming right agreements. And we have since determined that we also need an in-kind service agreement for people that are able to provide, I'll use for example, the design of the site, as opposed to them actually paying for a sponsorship. Their, their payment would be the in-kind. And so the town attorney has drawn up this agreement, and as you'll see, it's very similar to what was approved for the sponsorship agreements that were monetary. And would like to ask the board to approve that by motion.
Questions? A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve the in-kind services agreement for the disc golf course as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And just quickly, as an update to the, to the project, on Friday, the Public Services Director and some of the members of the volunteers have actually gone out and started looking at and marking some of the trees that'll, that will be removed. We're getting in our volunteer agreements for people that are going to be actually on the property doing, doing the work. And I'm, I'm very impressed with how, how this is really coming together and the interest in the community. And it's not just from Killable Hills businesses and folks, it's businesses all up and down the beach. So we anticipate to be back to you in May with the budget amendment that will get the monies that have been raised into an expenditure account and be ready to start spending it. Thank you.
Yeah, I've mentioned a couple times under Commissioners' agenda that we owe a lot of thanks to Daryl Davies and Derek Dow, Derek Dow drew up the map and sort of designed the course, not engineered, but designed the course. And I'm just blown away by what they have done. It's, it's amazing. I mean, they have pledged $40,000 or whatever that total is right now. And it's a good example of what can be done. You want something done and everybody work together, and of course, that's good. And I understand there might be some, tentatively, some in-kind work for doing mowing and some of the rough landscaping back there. Company had offered to do that, but still being talked about, so. Okay.
That's great. All right, we'll move on to Commissioners' agenda.
Well, I'd just like to remind everybody that we live in a very windy area, and to try to tie clothes, your trash bags, and please do not overfill your trash can because they will blow over. And lately, I've noticed, I don't know about you guys, but in my neighborhood, there's been a lot of trash everywhere. So I just want to remind people about that.
Just remind everybody, senior games starts April 18th. We have opening ceremonies on the 22nd, so anybody who wants to come out to the bomb center on the 22nd, opening ceremony starts at 11:30. You're welcome to come. If you're gonna come to the lunch, please let Shelley know, like, soon. Let her know by Monday of that week, so that would be like Monday of next week, I believe. So we're good on that. And senior games is the 18th through the 29th, so we've got two weeks of that going on. So we've got about 200 people participating here in Deer County, and then we'll have several go on to the state, and then many go on to nationals. So I know you hear from Jack McCombs frequently, so he's one that's very active, so very proud of our seniors.
I already said it. I jumped the gun a little bit.
No worries, no worries. It was perfect. Okay, under Mayor's agenda, two proclamations that I wanted to share this evening and see if the board would be willing to adopt these. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and specifically, April 10th through the 16th is the Week of the Young Child. The local children and youth partnership is the organization that brought these to us and requested us adopt these. You may recall, each April, they put out the display. One of the locations is here in our town, right at the corner of 8th Street. It's a display with the children, and each child represents a substantiated case of child abuse, child abuse or neglect in Deer County. So it's not, not a great thing to celebrate, but certainly worth putting out there for the awareness and public education and information. And folks wanting more information certainly can contact the Children in Partnership in Deer County, as well as the Department of Social Services in Deer County as well. But with, I guess I will make a motion, if you all don't mind, that we adopt both the proclamation of the Week of the Young Child, celebrating our youngest learners, April 10th through the 16th, 2016, and the Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2016 proclamation. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And with that, we will move on to Town Manager's agenda.
No ma'am, not this evening, thank you.
And again, Casey, welcome. Anything from your side? Anything from your side? Okay, then we will move on to the Consent Agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First item on the Consent Agenda is the minutes from the March 14th, 2016 meeting. The second is to schedule two public hearings. Schedule the public hearings from Monday, May the 16th, 2016, at 5:30. Both of these are requested public hearings. The first deals with the commercial zone conditional use, 153.177A, and 153.076 table of parking requirements to add small amusement rides with maximum capacity of 24 persons to the outdoor recreation activity in the commercial zone and parking requirements. The second is 153.180C2 commercial zone, establish four-area ratio for hotel motel in the commercial zone. Approval of the Consent Agenda will establish these public hearings, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions? A motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I think I'm motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will put aside the business, that's the business for the evening, and we will move to the table and then start the public forum. So, thank you all so much. Okay, well, we do this, for those of you who may not have attended our public forum before, we do this just to try to make it a little more comfortable and close feeling than when we're behind the dice. But we do this twice a year, we hold these public forums. It's an opportunity for members of the community to kind of more engage in a discussion with the board or bring topics to the board, whether they are celebration topics or whether they're opportunities for improvement or just questions that you may have. Oftentimes, things that have come out of the public forum help us or one of our committees, like the Appearance Committee, set goals of what we want to focus on moving forward. So, we appreciate so much that you are joining us this evening. And there's no particular rules set for this, we don't really enforce time limits. We do ask, if you don't mind, speaking from the podium, that way just everybody can hear you. And we also ask if you're going to speak, if you would identify yourself by name and address, but we don't time you, and we hope you will feel comfortable just sharing whatever it is that you wish to share with us. With that, I'll just call, who would like to go first? Have two hands? Okay, welcome. Bless you. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Phil Hobbs, and I represent the Chilwell Hills Beach Nourishment Taper Group. And you've heard from us, I think, a couple of times. And we're concerned about the fact that we have to pay the full 33 cent tax and we don't get all the sand. And we have, the last year or so, we've reached out to the Commissioners, we've talked with the mayor, we've had dialogue, we've offered some solutions, but in the absence of that, we haven't gotten very far, and so we've had no choice but to take legal action, which I'm sure you're aware of. Our group is not against beach nourishment. We're against the unfair taxation, and we're trying to get that addressed, and we hope the next budget in May that perhaps you will take a look at that. We would again like to remind you that the easements that you're claiming are not valid, and you cannot use that for the current beach nourishment project, and I think our attorney has demonstrated that. The Municipal Service Districts required that you find properties within the MSD that are in need of beach nourishment. We've looked at several of the state maps, and our beach is stable, everything in the taper zone is stable, is stable. And so, we don't see why we're in this process, why we're in the taper, and why we have to be involved in this. Your taxation is unfair. The entire KDH Oceanfront is not being taxed. Below us in the south, right next to Prospect Street, we're paying 33 cents. The property next to us on Prospect Street is paying 3 cents. So, you're not taxing the whole oceanfront, and so, we're saying that your MSD taxation is not fair and it's not legal. The taper group is not getting all the sand, but we have to pay all the taxes. And we're trying to get an adjustment. We think it should be reduced, we think there should be some solution. We were taxed last year, but there's no beach nourishment. And our understanding is that you had to do the beach nourishment this year. So, what's going to happen to that tax money that you collected last year? And nothing's happening. Are we going to get some sort of reduction? And now, we find out that the bids are lower that we got decked. Does that mean we're going to get a reduction in this year's taxes when you do the budget this year in May? Or we're, you know, we just sort of like to know where we are with this tax thing when you're collecting taxes and we're getting nothing for it? So, what you're doing is discriminating, basically, if you look at it, the out-of-town owner, we don't vote for you, we don't vote against you, but you're taxing us. And the county has said several times, they're not going to do this in a referendum, but yet you come back and you go, okay, we'll get the out-of-town people because they can't vote for us. And so, we don't, we don't think that is fair under the MSD statutes. Our attorney last April came to the meeting and told you that you didn't have the authority to do what you're doing. You don't have easements, you are misrepresenting the MSD statutes, and we're asking that you take a look at this. I'm sure you're aware that Nag's Head a few weeks ago had a similar case to our allegations, and they lost the case, and it's going to cost the city a lot of money. And again, that was over easements. So, we've given you suggestions, we've offered solutions, we're willing to resolve this. We need a dialogue with the city. We haven't been able to get that, we haven't been able to resolve it. We're willing to work with you, but nobody's willing to work with us. So, that's my pitch. We want, we want to resolve it, we want to make it work, we want to see the beach nourishment, but we just don't think we ought to be the one to have to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, if I could, before anything is said, at least, just throw my two cents. Mr. Hobbs, and this is completely anti what you stood up for, but with you being a plaintiff in that lawsuit, I mean, I'm going to have to recommend that the mayor and the Commissioners do not speak, do not speak to this matter and leave that between the attorneys. So, that will be my recommendation to you guys.
I can, however, address the tax part. What the statute requires is that you have a contract signed in the fiscal year that you began your taxing. The intent is that a contract will be signed. Dare County has awarded the work to Great Lakes Dredging Company. So, even though the work will not begin until 2017, the contract will be signed. So, there's, yes, ma'am, so there is, there is no requirement for any monies that was paid in this fiscal year to be returned.
Will that be addressed in the budget in May?
I'm not, I'm not following that.
Well, you've got our money and you didn't do anything this year. And also, you bid came in lower than was anticipated, so you don't need as much money because of the lower bid. So, are we going to reduce our taxes because, are you going to address this at the May budget meeting? That's all I'm asking.
Beach nourishment will be addressed in the May budget, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I have one thing related to the collection of the taxes for the District? Just for the public's sake to understand, any tax money collected specific for that Municipal Service District, for the purpose to which it was dedicated, has to be used to that. So, for the tax that we collected, that has to be used for beach nourishment. We cannot use it for something else if that puts anyone's, puts you, maybe feeling better. But we will, as a big picture, we will certainly be talking about the overall beach nourishment project and how that impacts the budget, but I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
Any revenue, even, even the additional revenue that the town receives from the shared revenues because of your increased tax in that district has to be used for that. So, the statute's very explicit that any monies received either directly from your tax or indirectly from such as shared revenues must be spent on the beach nourishment.
Okay, who would like to speak next?
Hey, I'm Skip Jones, 1508 Captain's Lane. Just a couple of quick things. This is actually for Steve, the water meters, which I think's a great idea because I've seen people get fairly hammered on that before. But a couple of things, I've got an out-of-town client, which it worked. Y'all realize that there was a water leak and cut the order off, which is great, left a note on the door. I don't know if they were notified by mail or anything like that. I'm just curious, it looked like a padlock, if I'm not mistaken, on the water meter. In order to fix the leak, we've got a, how do I go about getting that removed? Just call the town? I mean, to have a plumber fix it, he's got to have water flowing to find out where it's leaking. So, I'm just trying to figure out what the process is to get to that point.
They can contact our office. We put a padlock on it for their protection release, so nobody can just access it to turn it on without them being aware of it. So, we can meet them at any point and take the lock off, whether we take it off and just leave the valve off so it's accessible to the plumber, or we can meet the plumber out there and actually turn it on for them, so then they can locate the leak. And as long as we have a number on file, we'll tag the door, but we also call them to make them aware of it. We actually try to contact them first to see if they want us to lock it. If we can't make contact, then we lock it, tag the door, and send a letter to them file.
Yeah, he just called me, and evidently, he wasn't aware of it till his son came down and tried to use the house.
Yeah, they can call.
I guess as a grandson, actually.
Yeah, they can call us anytime, and we'll be glad to go out there and, like I said, either meet.
Do they have to call, or can I call? My plumber will be going by there.
That's fine, yeah, you can give us a call.
Okay. Do they still offer, I know in the past, when it wasn't bleak and it was fairly exorbitant, that if they showed that they had had the repair, the leak repaired, they got a reduction in that cost. Is that still?
Yep, that's correct. We just need some sort of documentation that it's been repaired, and we can make an adjustment and then offer care plans, whatever they might need.
Okay, great, thank you. Other than that, I would just applaud the town for the work for the sidewalks, and I think there's been a lot done the last couple of years, and I think we're on a great track. Thank you all.
Thanks. Thanks, Skip.
I want to add something to that, just because I've got not a personal experience, but know someone with a personal experience on that. I don't know how, maybe we can update some information, but there's some of us, I think, that have probably got old phone numbers on file or files, numbers. But I know somebody I worked with had this happen, and I don't know if the number she had was maybe her home number or whatnot, but it was, it was Friday afternoon when this happened, and had she not gone home at lunch? She'd have come home, it'd have been padlocked, it'd have been Friday afternoon, it'd have been five o'clock, she did not have water. So, I don't, I think there's, we need to figure out a way to get, because almost everybody has cell phones now, there's got to be a way. Because I asked her, I said, did they not call you? And if they're going to padlock it, which I think is great, because that's what I told her, I said, she said, it's great they found the leak. I was like, but it would have been really bad to not have water. I said, well, we got you water, don't worry about that. But there's got to be a way we can update this, you know, even 6200 is a lot of people, but there's got to be a way that we can update.
Well, on the water bills, there's an area to update mailing addresses and things like that. I don't think people don't, you know, they're not going to pay attention to that, maybe through little reminders, social media.
Destination Dare or something on.
Right.
Not everybody doesn't look at that, I know, but we need to do something somehow to get people to, this is what can happen. What if?
Luckily, we definitely need numbers on file, but luckily, the tag has the after-hours number for the water plant, which they are there until midnight. So, and weekends, holidays, so anytime, you know, if that was the case, where she didn't get home until after five, it would state that number, and they could go and at least turn her back on, you know, until they made a resolution, figured out what's going on. But yeah, we should definitely bring a storm mile way to get updated, especially if they found it first.
And she didn't tell me that. Thank you.
Good information. Thanks for sharing all that.
Yeah, and that's seven days a week. The water plant's there till midnight. Somebody comes down 11 o'clock on Friday night and they call the plant, they come out and they're locked.
Great information. Okay, who else has anything? Colleen, welcome.
Hello, Colleen Almany, 909th Avenue. I would like to ask for you to consider putting some type of attendance requirement on the personnel who staff our, some of our boards and committees. I think that, and I go to a lot of the meetings, so I can see familiar faces, and it's very easy to spot who's missing. And I think if we have a committee that meets 12 times a year and someone has missed six meetings, that they're really doing a disservice to our town. They have put in an application and stated that they're interested in participating, which leads me to believe that they have the time that's necessary. You post the schedule of the meetings in advance, everybody knows when they are, that should minimize scheduling conflicts. And of course, you have emergencies and things pop up and vacations, and I understand that. But if you're missing half of what you're appointed to represent, I think that that really is a disservice to the town. I don't know what percentage is fair, but again, I think that there are people who are willing to serve, and if there's somebody who no longer is able to, that we should help them see that it would be better serving the town to have somebody else do it for them. Thank you.
I know the Planning Board has an attendance policy.
Really? I find that interesting, since that's the board I'm talking about. What is it?
I'm going to have to trust my memory. I believe it's you have to make two-thirds of the meetings. And I forget if it's a calendar new year or if it's a rolling kind of thing. So, that would be, no?
I think it's rolling, I don't think it's calendar.
Okay. And so, if you miss either 12 meetings, if you missed more than three, right? That's.
Okay, then I would like to ask the board to look at everyone's attendance.
Never mind.
Numbers, and maybe do something about that.
Would the chairperson on each committee be? It should be their responsibility. Would be responsible for enforcing their code of conduct, right?
We can provide the board with that information. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will, we obviously have some paperwork that we'll look into. Thank you.
Yeah, when I was on the planning board, we had to do it twice. Somebody wasn't there.
For someone not following what's stated in that. To put you back on the spot, Colleen, are there any other committees or task forces that you think we also need to look at this?
You were talking about the.
It's that guy right there. Actually, it's the three of us.
She thought it's the three people that are sitting right here.
Can I quote you on that?
No.
That one won't have to screw him.
It's nice we live in such a great town that loves each other.
Lot of love, lot of love.
Lot of love in this room. That's great. Okay, anyone would like to speak next?
After the end.
Who wants to follow, Colleen? Anyone?
I have something I'd like to say.
Well, of course.
You're a citizen. I'm Dana Harris, Assistant Chief Police here in Chilwell Hills. I just want to thank all the Dare County, Oklahoma missions of mercy for April 1st, April 2nd, dental, and four day rain, and all those volunteers we got with, but they were all out there. I think we did over 600, I don't know the exact number of dental stations in the rain that came out. We had people come in that had broken teeth, that were coming in rather the end of it. I mean, just saw people, and so many people really appreciate what was done. I just wanted to thank all the volunteers. And Mayor, if you could follow up on maybe a little bit more of the particular numbers, I appreciate it. But thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you for your presence out there, and Mark as well. It's so great to have the support that you. support that you all provide during the event. But we did serve 626 patients over the two-day event. We do not yet have all of these statistics back from the Dental Society. We expect to have those hopefully within another week or so. And then the committee, the Planning Committee is going to get together and we will probably, not probably, we will do follow-up media announcements about that, specifically, you know, how many procedures and what dollar amount that that adds up to. But it was an incredibly successful event, especially given the weather that at times was very ominous, lightning, thunder, all of that. So, but it does, it took, we had just under 200 local volunteers work to put the event on over the two-day event, plus a day of setup the day before. And over 250 dental professionals from dentists to hygienists to dental assistants. And then we also have dental students, fourth year dental students that could do procedures from the ECU Dental School as well as the UNC Dental School. So, definitely that's one of those events that you say it takes a village. It surely does. And it's just amazing. It's an amazing event. Anyone's interested that this gentleman, just a story related to it, came up the second day at the event. He was there both days because he was getting a front partial put in. And you may have been standing there. You were, yes, because you actually brought him over to me. Anyway, he showed me his x-ray from the first day. And literally, he was missing this, like, a whole gap of his teeth. His teeth were broken. It was like, literally, you can, I have his x-ray on my phone. You can look through, it was just pretty touching. You can look through the hole into his mouth. I mean, it was just so, anyway. But he was standing there in front of me with this huge grin and smile because he has beautiful teeth now. They put a partial in. And the confidence that he has now, it just changed his life. So, it's really neat to be a part of something like that. Very cool. So, thank you for bringing that up. And again, thank you. You guys were there around the clock, whether you personally or our officers. We started doing that, I don't know, three or four years ago, having officers there overnight to help keep peace in the lines and make sure things don't get out of hand. And it really makes a huge impact on how well the event goes.
Thanks for making those numbers. When the cans go out in number, that helps the rain hard before they get back in the lines. So, that helped a whole lot.
Thank you for enforcing that.
They were going through with part of their flashlight and write numbers on hands in the dark. But it was neat. It's really neat thing.
But especially, I mean, I can't, I can't enforce enough how the KDH Police Department was really, it was, Dana and Mark were a tremendous support, but they were there in force and not just, it's a two-day event, but it's really a three-day event because we set up all day the day before on Thursday. So, and believe it or not, we called them on Thursday. So, when I, when I called Dana on Thursday, he had folks there immediately when, when we needed somebody there on Thursday. So, it's, I just can't, I can't tell you enough how much we relied on Kildale Hills Police Department to help us with that. So, it's, it really was something that it, it does take a village and it, and it really does make a difference in folks' lives.
Julie Hayner was out there. She was caring for an infant while mom went in to have an x-ray. She didn't want to take the infant into the x-ray.
I don't want to be featured in that.
Anyway. All kinds of things.
Dana had to keep water so people didn't lucky choke his teeth out.
New teeth out.
Yeah, the new ones, yeah, it'd be bad.
For a mess.
Don't need that extraction now.
Who else has anything to share or bring up? Now that some times pass, since Colleen spoke.
James Almany, 909th Avenue, no relation to Cali.
Even though it's the same address.
I want to thank the Planning Department. We had, I had an issue on my street. There was a house fire. The people didn't board the windows up. I mean, it was open. And, you know, with some of the risk involved in a house fire and the structural damage and being, that we're on a path right to one of the schools, I appreciate the fact that they stepped up and were diligent and made a bunch of phone calls and finally tracked down the people that, you know, owned the house. And, you know, evidently, it was quite a job. My question is, well, first of all, I can say, sometimes you have to be careful what you wish for. I don't know who paid the person who boarded up the windows with cabinet doors and all kinds of stuff. It's, you know, it might look worse now than it did before, but, you know, at least it's boarded up. I'm wondering, you know, I know that's very difficult legally when there's an issue like this, but I wonder if there's not something we can do to speed up that process when there's a situation like that? You know, when a house is on fire, that's been on fire. You know, I understand people are still living there. They're more than happy to take care of it because their belongings are still in there. But in a situation like this where it's a total loss and, you know, the house is vacant, that there's not something that we can do to kind of speed up that process of getting that secured? Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. I don't know if we're prepared to be able to address that tonight or if we need to look into. I mean, I know we'll look into it. Okay. Because I know it is a legal process, but certainly we can look into our process and see if anything can be amended. So, we'll do that and then we'll bring it to either the next meeting or the meeting after that. Okay. Thank you. What was that in the peanut gallery?
No, you don't want to know.
Okay. Well, the camera probably caught it because we now have these little cameras here. So, I'll just have to watch the meeting. Okay. Who else has anything tonight? That's it. You guys have anything?
No, I wanted to comment on, we talked about the sidewalks and the streets and we've been doing a lot of water and sewage work and all that. It's really nice to get the infrastructures getting, you know, everything's getting, try to get right up to date. So, from a certain point on, and we're not sure when that is, it'll just be a maintenance thing, keeping things up, you know. And I, all the departments have done such a great job with that. I appreciate it. Really proud of the staff we have.
Thank you. Well, appreciate everybody coming out. I guess if no one has anything else they want to address, we will have a nation to adjourn. All of us in favor, please sign up and say aye.
Aye.